The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tyers? Alderman Middlebrook? Alderman Bosley? Alderman Moore? Alderman Hubbard? Alderman Ingracia? Alderman Calder? Alderman Rice? Alderman Gunther? Alderman Valmer? Alderman Martin? Alderman Ornowitz? Alderman Murphy? Alderman Howard? Alderman Green? Alderman Odenberg? Alderman Rhodey? Alderman Kennedy? Alderman Davis? Alderman Spencer? Alderman Mohammed? Alderman Boyd? Alderman Vaquero? Alderman Ogilvy? Alderman Con? Alderman Boyd? Alderman, I'm sorry, Alderman Navarro? President Reed?
Here.
Alderman Bosley? Alderman Hubbard? Alderman Green? Alderman Rhodey? Alderman Kennedy? Alderman Davis? Alderman Spencer? Alderman Mohammed? Alderman Ogilvy? Alderman Con? Nineteen present.
A quorum being present. We will be led today in prayer by Rachel Mora-Moko from Rosati-Cane, and she is the choir director.
We will be saying the Rosati-Cane prayer. "Jesus, unite my heart to your heart, my works to your works, my whole self to yourself, and may Jesus be the way we walk, the truth we follow, and the life we lead. Amen."
Now, as it's the holidays, when we kick off the holidays here at the Board of Aldermen, we lead it off with the, just the beautiful voices from the Rosati-Cane High School carolers. They've been caroling to benefit children since 1911,
(Singing) He will not see me stopping here to watch his woods fill up with snow. My little horse must think it queer to stop without a harness near between the horns and frozen lake. The darkest darkness of night he gives his harness bells a shake to ask if there is some mistake beyond the other sound. The sweet, old easy way and a big play. The woods are lovely, dark and deep, but I have promised that I'll go as much to go before I sleep and much to go before I sleep. Before I sleep, oh, I sleep.[576.64][577.72](Applause) (Singing) We wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas and a happy new year. Good tidings we bring to you and your kin. Good tidings for Christmas and a happy new year. We wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas and a happy new year.[613.84][614.84](Applause)
Let's give a big round of applause to the Rosati-Cane. And to the choir director, Rachel, thank you so much for opening us up in prayer today. And there are little canisters that are floating around here, and if you can deposit anything in those little canisters, the funds go to help kids all over our city. So, let's give them one more big round of applause. Introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests? Alderman from the fourteenth?
Mr. President and esteemed colleagues, I'd like to have as my honored guest today, Nathan Lett from Firefighters Local Seventy-Three, and Mr. Demetrius Alfred, President, Firefighters Local Seventy-Three.
Welcome.
And Lou Hamilton, also as another guest of mine. Have a Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas. Alderman from the twenty-first?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to welcome Mr. Percy Green III, the Vice President of the Firefighters Institute of Racial Equality.
Welcome Percy. Alderman from the fourth?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to have as my special guest Mr. Keith Taylor from the Carpenters, and Mr. Jeff Hance.
All right, welcome Keith and Jeff. Alderman from the twenty-seventh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce my special guest Frederick Cersey with Plumbers and Pipe Fitters, and Merry Christmas to everyone this year.
Alderman from the twenty-third, and Alderman, thanks for allowing Alderman from the twenty-seventh to go first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to introduce as my special guest Greg Meyer from Tully's Park Neighborhood Association, and he's also a member of the EcoDevo Board. So, if you're hunting for money, you might want to...
You need, that's the guy to talk to. Well, we certainly welcome Greg. Let's give him a big round. Alderman from the twenty-second?
Mr. President, members of the board, I have several honored guests this morning. Mr. Clint McBride from Local One-Ten, Sheila Jones from Amaran, Missouri, Chris Pickle and Leroy Grant with AT&amp;T.
Welcome, guys. Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the twelfth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to introduce as my special guest today, Sean Weller from Congressman Clay's office, and Lou Hamilton, who I see sitting over there, and to everybody in the galleries, my special guest.
All right, thank you all. Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the tenth, I'd like to wrap this up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As we gather here on December seventh, you know, most mornings I like to stand here and pick on the poor Alderman from the twenty-third or someone else, but today is Pearl Harbor Day, and I would ask that maybe we all stand for a moment of silence. This was a benchmark day in our history. It affected my parents' lives, my uncles, my aunts. I'm sure it affected all of yours in some way, and as it goes on and time passes, many people might forget how devastating a day this was for the United States, so I thank you for that.
All right, can everybody in the chambers and galleries please rise for a moment of silence at Pearl Harbor? Thank you. Approval of the minutes?
Approval of the minutes, November thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the motion for the approval of the minutes?
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for approval of the minutes for November the thirtieth, two thousand eighteen.
Moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, second by Alderman from the tenth and twelfth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Report to city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for reappointment to the St. Louis Housing Authority. The reappointment of Mr. Saladin Martinez, who resides in the Seventh Ward and whose term will expire July twentieth, two thousand nineteen. I respectfully request your approval of the reappointment. Sincerely, Lyda Cruz, Mayor.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Housing Authority Commission?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to approve the mayor's appointment.
Moved by Alderman from the seventh, second by Alderman from the thirteenth, any discussion? Alderman from the first?
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear. Did she say the approval or reapproval?
I think she said...
It's the reappointment. Reappointment, I'm sorry, right. He's already on the board, right? Right, that's right. Yes. Mr. President, if the Alderman from the seventh would yield so I can ask that question?
Alderman from the seventh, we yield a question until Alderman from the first.
Yes.
Alderman from the first, please proceed.
Thank you. Alderman, Mr. Martinez is already on the board, is that correct?
Alderman, I'm double-checking that. I know he's been on the board in the past, yes.
Because they said reappointment, and I didn't, I thought he was gone.
He is not currently on the board. That is an appointment, not a reappointment.
And so, I'm bringing this up because I have been brought, it has been brought to my attention that there is a perhaps conflict of interest with his being, going back onto the board, and I would ask that we send this to committee, because I would like to ask some questions, particularly about where he lives, which is might be a potential conflict of interest and several other things that I would prefer.
I know where he lives. He lives on Tucker.
Okay.
Yeah, in the Seventh Ward.
Okay, that's fine. That's one of them, but there's some other questions that we have. He was up until, a few days, a few days ago, he was the Director of North Newstead, then he moved to...
Employment Connection, I believe?
Something else, and so there are some questions about that.
I'm fine with Senate committee. I'd ask that I go to HUDs.
All right, you want, so withdraw your motion. Would you like to withdraw your...
Mr. President, members of the board, I withdraw my motion to approve the mayor's appointment and ask that this be sent to the HUDs Committee.
It's been moved by Alderman from the seventh that we assign the mayor's appointment of the Housing Authority Commission to the HUDs Committee. I'll maintain a second, second by Alderman from the twenty-second, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign the mayor's appointment to the Housing Authority Commission to the HUDs Committee.
So noted.
Is that the extent?
That is the extent.
We will dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills or resolutions? Alderman, Alderman from the twenty-first?
Mr. President, I would like to take Board Bill Twenty-Five as amended off the informal calendar.
Madam Clerk, please make note that, place Board Bill Twenty-Five as amended on the regular calendar.
So noted.
Would anyone like to take any further bills off of any of our informal calendars? Alderman from the nineteenth?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to take Board Bill One-O-four off the informal calendar, back to perfection.
Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill Number One-O-four at the tail end of the regular perfection calendar. Would anyone like to take any further bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any further bills off of any of our informal calendars? We'll dispense with line item ten, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill One-Seventy-Five, sponsored by Alderman Calder, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and comptroller to enter into a lease agreement with Front Page Lofts LLC to lease property located in City Block Five-Sixteen for a period of ten years and for the purposes, purposes of conducting operations of the City of St. Louis Board of Election Commissioners and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill One-Seventy-Six, sponsored by Alderman Valmer, an ordinance establishing the Hill Special Business District pursuant to Section Seventy-One Point Seven-Nine Zero through Seventy-One Point Eight-Zero Eight of the Revised Statutes of Missouri, setting its boundaries, a tax rate, initial rate of levy subject to the approval of qualified voters and uses to which revenue may be put, creating a Board of Commissioners and containing the severability, effectiveness, and emergency clauses. Board Bill One-Seventy-Seven, sponsored by Alderman Gunther, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment authorizing the city to issue its taxable industrial development revenue bonds and has a Bush LLC project, Series Twenty-Eighteen, in a principal amount of not to exceed seventy-five million dollars for the purposes of providing funds to pay the cost of acquiring certain equipment for industrial development project, approving a plan for such project, authorizing and directing the mayor and comptroller to execute certain documents related thereto. Board Bill One-Seventy-Eight, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute a permanent irrevocable easement which shall give, grant, extend, and confer on the city, its agents, successors, and assigns exclusive rights to build, maintain, and span of sidewalk improvements along the east side of Sulphur from the intersection of Sulphur and Manchester to the driveway to the north and containing a severability clause. Board Bill One-Seventy-Nine, sponsored by Alderman Ornowitz, an ordinance establishing a two-way stop site at the intersection of Atkins-Pope regulating all traveling northbound and southbound on Atkins and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill One-Eighty, sponsored by Alderman Martin, an ordinance, any and all private construction projects, building or property maintenance performed within the city except for single-family homes, multi-family dwellers within four or less units that receive either city revenue bonds, tax, city tax credits or abatements, or any other form of city public financing including that resulting from tax increment financing or special tax district or is performed on buildings or properties owned by the city that are leased to a private entity must at minimum abide by all applicable city ordinances, rules, regulations, state and federal laws, rules and regulations regarding minority participation and prevailing wages as provided under the Revised Statutes of Missouri as such statute exists as November twenty, twenty-eighteen and all applicable city ordinances, state, federal laws, rules, regulations regarding insurance and tax requirements required of public works. Board Bill One-Seventy-One, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, an ordinance establishing a temporary three-way stop site which shall be and remain in place for a period of six months starting from the date on which said stop site is installed at the intersection of Blackstone and Wells, regulating all traffic traveling eastbound and westbound on Wells at Blackstone and regulating all traffic traveling southbound on Blackstone at Wells and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee?
To the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill Seventy-Five, One-Seventy-Five and One-Seventy-Six, to the HUDs Committee, Board Bill One-Seventy-Seven and One-Eighty.
Have some more, please proceed.
To the Streets Committee, Board Bill One-Seventy-Eight, One-Seventy-Nine, and One-Eighty-One. That is the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following bills were reported out of the Streets Committee. Board Bill One-Sixty-Seven, sponsored by Alderman Ornowitz, pursuant to Ordinance Six-Eight-Nine-Three-Six, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Estella M. Daly Way, which shall begin at the intersection of Morgan Ford and Upton Court and run east on the forty-one-hundred block of Upton Court. Board Bill One-Seventy-Two, sponsored by Alderman Martin, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above-surface, surface, and subsurface rights for vehicle, equestrian, pedestrian travel in the southern one-sixty-nine feet of fifteen-foot-wide north-south alley bounded by Robert on the, on the north, Vermont on the east, Colin on the south, and Alabama on the west in the City of St. Louis and herein after describing accordance with charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill One-Seventy-Three, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Odenberg, Alderman Boyd, and Alderman Murphy, an ordinance creating a new chapter under Title Twenty-three of the Revised Code of the City titled Small Wireless Facilities and pertaining to the establishment of procedures and requirements relating to the construction and deployment of small wireless facilities to be codified as Chapter Twenty-three Point Fifty-Nine of the Revised Code of the City containing severability clause, savings clause, and emergency clause. Board Bill One-Seventy-Four, sponsored by Alderman Howard, an ordinance establishing a stop site at the intersection of Ridgewood Avenue, Wilcott Avenue, regulating all traffic traveling westbound on Wilcott at Ridgewood and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of second reading.
We'll dispense with line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill One-Sixty, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, pursuant to Ordinance Six-Eight-Nine-Three-Six, an ordinance authorizing the honorary street name Bob Gibson Way, which shall begin at the intersection, intersection of Gibson and South Kings Highway and run east on Gibson at the intersection of Gibson and Kentucky. Board Bill Fifty-One, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, an ordinance amending ordinance number Six-Nine-Nine-Seven-Nine, Six-Nine-Nine-Eight-Zero, Six-Nine-Nine-Eight-One, approving and authorizing the execution of a First Amendment to redevelopment agreement between the city and the ROL Capital Three, Inc., authorizing other related actions and containing the severability clause. Board Bill One-Twenty-Five, sponsored by Alderman Vaquero, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Fifty-Five-Fifty-Filer. Board Bill One-Twenty-Seven, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Eighteen-Fifteen Locusts. Board Bill One-Thirty-Eight, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Forty-Three Twenty-Eight Swan. Board Bill One-Sixty-Six, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, an ordinance determining that the tax increment financing plans exhibited, listed in Exhibit A are making satisfactory progress under the proposed time schedule for the completion of projects therein. Board Bill One-Sixty-Three, sponsored by Alderman Howard and Alderman Gunther, an ordinance amending ordinance Six-Six-Three-Eight-Four, approved July thirty-first, twenty-four, two thousand four, as follows. Section One of Ordinance Six-Six-Three-Eight-Four is amended by adding a new subsection, new subsection One-Zero Point Zero-Four Point One-Four-Five to be titled Animals Putting Persons in Fear: Adoption of Strays, Dangerous Dogs, Teethering Confinement, and Treatment of Dogs and Cats on Owners and Guardians' Property, Relinquishment of Owned Dogs and Cats of the Animal Regulation Center, Neuter Assistance Education Fund, Interfering with the Health Officer or Agent and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill One-Twenty-Eight, I'm sorry, Board Bill Twenty-Eight, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Twenty-Six Forty-Seven through Twenty-Six Fifty-One Washington. Board Bill Twenty-Nine, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for the Tiffany Neighborhood Scatter Sites area. Board Bill One-Forteen, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Twenty-Eight Eleven through Fifteen Locusts. Board Bill One-Twenty-Six, sponsored by Alderman Da, Alderman Spencer, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Thirty-Five Twenty-One, Twenty-Six Twenty-Seven, and Thirty-Five Thirty-Four Oregon. Board Bill One-Thirty-One, sponsored by Alderman Spencer, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Thirty-One Zero Seven Merrimack. Board Bill One-Sixty, One-Sixty-Two, sponsored by Alderman Rice, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Forty-One Zero Two Shaw. Board Bill One-Sixty-Eight, sponsored by Alderman Spencer, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for Thirty-Five Fifty-Nine California. Board Bill Ninety-Nine, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service authorizing the mayor and comptroller of the city to execute an easement agreement which shall give, grant, extend, and confer, and confer in perpetuity on the city, its agents, successor, assigns the right to install, construct, maintain, repair, upgrade a water main for, water main for the purpose of delivering water, approving an easement for the perpetual easement authorizing certain actions by city officials and containing a severability clause. Board Bill One-Fifty-Eight, sponsored by Alderman Valmer, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and comptroller to execute a quitclaim deed to Mary Jane Wagner of certain city-owned property located in City Block Five-Zero Five Four, which property is known as Thirty-One Twenty Alfred, upon receipt of and in consideration of the sum of fifty-five thousand and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill One-Zero Nine, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed, an ordinance for the creation of disconnected youth task force to study the obstacles to education and employment to disconnected youth in a city and requiring said task force to compile a report of their findings and recommendations to be submitted to the mayor and Board of Aldermen Standing Committee to be designated by the president of the Board of Aldermen within one year following the first meeting of the task force. Board Bill One-Seventy-Two, sponsored by President Reed, and the following other persons: Mohammed Rice, Vaquero, Murphy, Navarro, Howard, and ordinance revising the transparency in government law, Ordinance Six-Nine Seven Zero Seven, Ordinance Seven Zero Three Two One, codified as Chapter Three Point One One Five of the Revised Code to require the effective closed caption of all public meetings of the St. Louis Board of Aldermen, including committee meetings, the Board of Estment and Apportionment, and the Preservation Board. That is the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar?
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar?
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, second by Alderman from the tenth, and the twenty-seventh. the twenty-seventh. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our perfection consent. Calendar, Alderman favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
That is the extent of perfection consent.
Board Bills for perfection.
Board Bill one thirty-three Committee Substitute sponsored by Alderman Kodor and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportionment and the Board of Public Service authorizing the St. Louis Municipal Finance Corporation to issue and sell its new revenue bonds in order to fund the construction, repair, improvement, expansion, renovation, furnishing, and/or equipment, equipping of the Savannah's Convention Center in an aggregated principal amount not to exceed a hundred and five million dollars and containing an emergency and severability clause.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill one thirty-three Committee Substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. I move to perfect Board Bill one thirty-three Committee Substitute.
Move about Alderman from the seventh, second about Alderman from the thirteenth and Alderman from the twenty-third. Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could, some introductory remarks here. Board Bill one thirty-three Committee Substitute would help pave the way for the renovation and expansion of the America's Center on Washington Avenue. It's, there is contemplated a hundred and seventy-five million dollar renovation and expansion of the existing facility to add about a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of new usable space in the form of some new ballrooms and some new multipurpose space as well as the addition of going from about twelve to almost thirty loading docks on Cass Avenue, which has been something that the Convention Center desperately needs. The source of revenues for this would be from the existing hotel motel tax that currently is paying for debt on the Edward Jones Dome. Those bonds are set to expire in two thousand and twenty-four when that debt will be repaid. What we will be doing under this proposal is basically reissuing bonds and extending our, the city's existing six million dollar payments for up to forty years as the Board Bill says. All of this is contingent on the county doing the exact same thing. This is an example of regional cooperation. This is a facility that supports jobs not only in St. Louis City but St. Louis County, both restaurant and hotel jobs and the vendors who work at the America's Center. And if we pass this, it is, as I mentioned, completely contingent on the county passing similar bill authorizing similar payments. Right now, we're making six million dollar payments towards the debt on the dome. The county's also making these six million dollar payments and the state's making twelve. I'll be upfront and say we do not have a commitment from the state for any additional revenues. The hope is if we show leading as a region that we can convince the state to also help with a future phase of expansion and improvements to the Convention Center. But for this first phase, we're talking about basically extending the city and the county's payments of six million dollars a year to fund this hundred and seventy-five million dollar expansion. The America's Center is responsible for almost two hundred and sixty million dollars in direct spending in our regional economy on an annual basis and supports twenty-nine-hundred full-time equivalent jobs between restaurants, hotels, and the jobs directly at the America's Center. I do hope you'll all support this. We've worked very closely with the comptroller's office, with the mayor's office, with the county executive, and the county council to craft this proposal. My understanding is whether it's today or early next week, the county executive should be sending the bill down to the county council for their debate and approval. But again, we're all leading together on this. Our bill is contingent on them passing something similar. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the Board, if the Alderman from the seventh would yield.
Alderman from the seventh, we yield a question to the Alderman from the first.
Yes.
Please proceed, Alderman.
So, we originally took up these bonds in nineteen ninety-three.
That sounds correct.
Right, okay. Okay, so two thousand and three, two thousand and thirteen, that's twenty years, two thousand and eighteen, twenty-five. And they're supposed to, we finally are going to pay them off, and we're supposed to have that money coming in in two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year, right? That's correct.
That's accurate, yes.
So what would happen if we did not do this? What would happen with that money?
If we don't do this, that money would go into the general fund.
General fund being the general revenue?
Yeah.
So for things like demolition of buildings, for things like cutting grass, which the city is violating the law because they don't cut the grass, and we have a law that says it has to be cut at a certain amount of inches, it would also go for things like trimming trees, raises for our employees, those kind of things, right?
Theoretically, I mean, it'd be subject to appropriation, but it could be used for any number of things.
Right.
I'd point out that right now, though, you know, the convention and tourism business, as I mentioned, supports twenty-nine-hundred full-time equivalent jobs. So I guess if you further erode your convention business, that will have a negative impact on the hotels, the restaurants.
You're making a speech, you're not answering my question. I really would like you to answer my questions, and then you can close and make your speech. This is my time, so I reserve my time, please. So we could use that money for other things, please. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. And so I also look in here, and so that's six million dollars. Then it's another seventeen point seven, that's for some other payment. Is that correct? So it's like twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three million dollars a year, something like that. Is that right?
That's what's currently going towards debt on the building, yeah.
And then I'm looking at page twenty, forty, line twenty, it talks about the maintenance fund, starts out at twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. The maintenance payments means an annual payment that shall be made by the city subject to the annual appropriation for the payment and cost of maintaining and refurbishing the Convention Center. And then are we adding another two million dollars for that?
Down the road, yes, there'd be some money for maintenance. The thought being, you know, when you expand the convention business, you're going to be expanding tax revenues. And also, we won't want to find ourselves in a situation where we're making improvements and not having any funds set up for maintaining them.
So we will have to make some maintenance payments. When will that payment begin?
The maintenance payments, I believe, kick in after we've finished paying off the existing dome debt, so it's not.
So it would start in twenty, twenty-two, thereabout.
That's about right, yeah.
Okay, and so besides the twenty-three, seven million, we would be adding another two, so we would be having twenty-five, seven million.
Well, no, so the payments, so you're basically defusing and reissuing the bonds. So our payments are going to be that six million dollars a year.
Right. You're right, I'm sorry. But we do have the bond issue, which is a separate thing.
There's a separate bond issue. There's two bond issues.
Right.
Yes.
So we would be having the six million plus the two million, so we would have eight million instead of six million coming out the general revenue off the top.
Subject to appropriation. The six million would be for sure. I mean, we'd have to look at if the money's available for the two million, great. If not, it won't be done.
I have never, I've been here since, I was here with the original ninety-three agreement, which I voted no. And I have never known us not to find money for to pay these bills. What we don't do is we don't cut grass, and we don't tear down buildings. We have children drug into buildings. We don't do the things that, public safety, we don't pay our employees. We gave them a one-point-five percent raise, which is not enough to even cover the cost of health insurance. I sit on the benefits committee because of the, being the chair of public employees. So we do not find money to do the things that the general public would like done, but I have never known us not to find the money to pay the bonds or the debt structure on a financing, financing agreement for a stadium. So I doubt that that would be where the money would come from. I see here now, this time, we're not going to go for thirty-something years. We're going to go for forty years. So we're making this forty years into the future.
Really, is that, I guess that's a question? Is that a question?
Yes.
Okay. It's up to forty years, you know, that's really going to be dictated by the bond market and the comptroller will make ultimately that decision in, with her financial advisor to decide the length of the bonds. Based on current market conditions, I think they can probably borrow for thirty years, but they wanted the flexibility to go up to forty if need be.
And so if we do thirty to forty more years, we've done debt service on a Convention Center for any place from sixty to seventy years. Would never any of the money be in return to do some other things for, is that correct?
That would be, yeah, it would be thirty to forty years of debt. I mean, I would add that it's a public building, you know, it's a loss leader, right? Like a Convention Center in any city. It's not a building that, it's a building that exists to support conventions and tourism and to highlight our city and to support restaurant and hotel jobs.
I, I understand public buildings. I also understand the public property that we have next door to people who live in my community, and the city lets the weeds go up to the knees, to the knees and things like that. So I definitely understand public. But I also understand that there's the rest of the public, that there is a community around that's not downtown and which people need their grasses cut. I also understand there was a young lady that used to live in my ward who got drug into one of our vacant buildings and attacked and raped and assaulted. So I understand that. I understand all these, these employees with the city of St. Louis are asking me how, and talking to me and talk to my committee about how can we give them a one-point-five percent raise which does not cover the insurance, that they increase in insurance. So all these things, we have public employees, we have public buildings, we have a lot of things that's public. What I don't understand is why we keep coming in here, week after week after week, and the only thing that we can understand and what we promise is what will happen downtown. This will be better for downtown. This will be better for the income. But in all the thirty years that I've been here, and I've, so now, I've asked this from our budget director, I want them to give me a projection that's been true. Because the projections that have been provided in the last twenty-five, thirty years just do not come to be true. They're false. They're based on false assumptions. I listed five or six last week. They don't happen. We come back, we tell about that in the future, we're going to have this pot of money. I was back in nineteen ninety-three, and now I'm in the future, two thousand and eighteen, and there is no pot of money coming. We're committing that money, and we never have enough things to do for the people who want things done in their community. We do not seem like that the people who live in our community are important, that their property values are important, that the citizens who work for us, our public employees, are not important. But buildings and structures are important. I most certainly understand the importance of bringing in funds. You cannot spend if you don't bring something in. But I wanted to know, when do you also spend money on the public employees and the public buildings that's in other places besides downtown? So when you tell me, you make that speech to me about public, the public buildings, we have other public buildings. I have a question about what happens to this, so what happens if the county says, you said you've been working with the county council, what if the county says no?
If the county says no, the project's dead.
And then what happens to that money?
Keeps paying the existing bonds, and then I guess would go into the general fund.
And then we would just be so depressed to have six million dollars a year in our budget to do other things with, right?
I guess you'd have that six million dollars and you'd probably shutter a bunch of hotels, lose some jobs, close some restaurants. So at the end of the day, I think we'd be in a worse economic position if we did nothing.
But you know, that's the, that's the boogeyman. I've been here the whole time, but we're shuttering houses and we're losing population. We're losing people who don't want to be around this mess that the city is doing. Now, this is not private property. This is the city not taking care of LRA property. And you go and drive through these neighborhoods, and everybody got their grass cut except for the city. The buildings that are a mess are the city's property or LRA's property. So you're shuttering neighborhoods. This board in their wickedness a few, many years ago took part of my neighborhood and gave it to the fourth. That part of the fourth ward is falling in, whereas my part is still thriving. But you, by you doing something like that, you affect the whole city. So when you tell me about downtown, I will each time tell you about North St. Louis and the lack of development in North St. Louis, the lack of attentiveness to North St. Louis, and the fact that we continue, continue, and continue thirty, forty years, we're going with the same thing. We've got to take care of downtown. We've got to build this. And we do not, we do not ever reach what we say we're going to do. It's always false. It's a false premise. Then you say, well, believe me this time. And I'm telling you, I can give you time after time after time when it has not worked. We put billions of dollars in downtown, but every time I look up, we're back here saying, oh, we've got to do this because the hotels will close. Well, I'm saying that the citizens are leaving. This city used to have millions of people that live here. We're down to under.
Can I have some order? Please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you. We're down here under three hundred and twenty-five thousand people and leaking like a boat with water in it. We have not found a way to say that our citizens are important. We continue to say, well, next time we'll do something. And here we are, the very next week in here, saying we want to keep that six million dollars. And so you saying that the hotels are closed, I don't think the hotels are more important than the addresses in the forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine hundred blocks, fifty through fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-eight, fifty-nine hundred blocks in North St. Louis. They're not more important. They're equally important that the people have safe places to live. And the whole holdout of, well, we'll have these jobs. I can't, I'm still waiting for them to show me the jobs that were produced. When we did the Renaissance Hotel downtown and it went bankrupt, and I was sitting on HUDs and they came back and said, oh, well, we got to do this money to do the Renaissance Hotel after we spent all that money and bankrupt, the hotel went bankrupt. So man brought down all the people to talk about, all the people who had jobs. And we started asking them, the Alderman, Alderman from the twenty-first and the twenty-seventh at the time were French and Carter, where do these people live? And they finally wouldn't let him answer anymore because none, almost zero percent, like two percent, lived in North St. Louis. So when you talk about all these jobs, even the little small hotel jobs that didn't make a lot of money, were not going to the people in North St. Louis. If you're not putting money into people's pocket to have a job, you're not doing the basic services, trash, cutting grass, demolition of buildings, economic development, you're not doing that. You're not doing anything. But you keep telling me, love me more than you love yourself. And I am telling you, I do not love downtown more than I love North St. Louis. And so this administration is just out of its mind to me to come with this after we just said we're going to try to put this money together for a soccer stadium. And so all we seem to be, that this administration seems to care about is downtown, and we are killing our neighborhoods. So making that speech to me doesn't make, I don't care, let the hotels close and start fixing up the neighborhoods. Close every last one of these hotels downtown and stop running the people out of their neighborhoods. These are people who were not able to buy houses. These were people who had to buy houses in North St. Louis because there was racism and redlining and everything else, and they couldn't buy houses other places. And now you're putting all the burden on them from the city, because the city's telling us we don't have the money to cut the grass properly. We don't have the money to demolish, demolish the buildings. We don't have the money to do economic development in North St. Louis. But every damn time, we got the money to do development in downtown. So don't, that's why I just ask you to answer my questions, because you're not convincing me, and you're not going to convince me, that it's something so urgent that we have to keep doing this. Yes, we would probably lose some conventions, but we won't lose them all. This is that thing of St. Louis thinking they're Chicago and New York. We are not. We are St. Louis. And we need to have a budget and live within it, and we need to have some priorities that include people in the communities. We do not have those priorities. So that speech that you're making doesn't make sense to me. I don't have any other questions for the Alderman from the seventh ward, and I'd like to thank him for answering my questions.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to rise in opposition of this. I was brought over to the Convention Center maybe a year and a half ago. I used to be on convention, but I was taken off, I guess, in anticipation of this bill. I think it's just totally ridiculous that we keep doing this. I can't say how tired I am of this. I've been doing this for twenty, twenty-five, thirty years, and it's the same thing. I went out into my community this weekend. I went to Christmas parties, I went to parties. My community gave me standing ovations for voting no last year, last week. They clapped, they sent me emails. Thank you for voting no, Ms. Tyas. We know you didn't win, but at least somebody is listening to us. We voted no. I got people from other parts of the city saying, hey, we voted no. How are you doing that? We seem to be tone deaf to people. And all, this democratic body seems to be a republican body that continues to take our money and address it someplace else, and then talk about, look at what those communities look like. And it's just not North St. Louis that's doing it. South St. Louis is a very different place than the one I used to live in many, many years ago. And it's ridiculous to put all this money. We didn't even say, well, we'll put part of the money, but we are poor city, so we can't give you the full six million. We can maybe give you three millions. We just put six million back into it, plus the bond service, plus we're going to add another two million to maintenance. Plus, we forget that we have all these people suing our police. We just have to pay, we just have to have another amount of money that's going to the police because the police are having to settle these lawsuits. People, that does not come from an infinite fund. It comes from our general revenue. When the police lose these lawsuits, we're paying it. And we continue to do this budget that makes no sense, and it, all we doing are, we're destroying the neighborhoods in my community, and I will not support this, and I ask for a roll call, because this is ridiculous.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the seventh, you recognize to close.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the Board. As I mentioned in my introductory remarks, this project's been looked at very closely by the comptroller, the budget director, the mayor's office, the county executive's office, the county counselor. I would ask for your favorable consideration to support the Convention Center, to support the convention and tourism industry jobs in our region. And with that, I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the seventh, second about Alderman from the Alderman from the 24th, that we adopt, we perfect, we perfect Board Bill 133 Committee Substitute. Is there a request for roll call? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyers. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. I didn't hear you. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Ingracia. Alderman Kodor. Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Velkorl. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Con. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderman Bosley. Will do. Alderman Kennedy. Alderman Mohammed. 26 aye votes and two no votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the 7th, and perfected Board Bill 133 Committee Substitute.
Board Bill 169 sponsored by Alderman Ornowitz, President Reed, Alderman Green, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Rice, Alderman Howard, and Alderman Martin. An ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of City Department of Health to enter into and execute an opioid crisis response service contract with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services in order to help to fund some personnel costs, auto travel reimbursement, and equipment supplies for the crisis response, resource response team upon approval of the Board of Estment and Apportionment and containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 12th, you recognized on the perfection of Board Bill 169. Recognize perfection of Board Bill 169.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move to perfect Board Bill 169.
Moving by Alderman from the 12th, second by Alderman from the 23rd, and Alderman from the 28th. Please proceed, Alderman.
As, as, as it reads here, you know, it's a bill for the opioid crisis here in St. Louis and we're moving forward for the grant. Where health, the health department will, you know, distribute the money. So I'm just asking for your consideration on, on this board bill. You know, it's, I think basically put a staff together, you know, how they're going to move forward with this and so on.
Okay, thank you. Alderman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. On the second reading of this board bill, there were a number of us who had asked to have our names added to the bill.
Yes.
I know that I did and my colleague next to me had asked and there were a number of other people as well. But I just wanted to add to this that even though we are just finally getting up to speed on this crises, that the rest of our region has been very active and moving forward. So I'm glad to see this bill and there is a crisis here that must be dealt with. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And Alderman, that is a very valid point, which is why I just asked to get another copy of the agenda to look at those final names. If you do not see your name on this list of co-sponsors, now is the time to add your name to the list because once we perfect it, the bill can no longer be changed after that. So please let us know immediately. So we have the Alderman from the 6th, Alderman from the 28th, Alderman from the 2nd, Alderman from the 25th, Alderman from the 7th, Alderman from the 20, 20, 23rd, Alderman from the 27th, Alderman, Alderman from the 13th, Alderman from the 19th. Alderman from the 4th. No, no, not the Alderman from the 4th. Any further, any further additions? Madam Clerk, did you have that? Could you read that list back to me?
Yes. I have Alderman from the 23rd, Alderman from the, I'm sorry, Alderman from the 27th, Alderman from the 19th, Alderman from the 13th, the, I'm sorry, I don't know him yet, but the 7th, the 6th, the 28th, the 2nd, and the 25th.
And the 22nd. And the 5th. Any further? And the 18th. And the 10th. And the 3rd. Anything further? Yes. Yeah, please, please read the list in its totality.
Alderman Ornowitz, President Reed, Alderman Green, Alderman Gunther, Rice, Howard, Martin, and I'll just go through the list of numbers. The 23rd, 27th, 19th, 13th, 7th, 6th, 28th, 22nd, 25th, 22nd, the 5th, the 18th, the 10th, and the 3rd.
Yes. All right. Thank you. And the 2nd.
And the 2nd. And the 2nd.
Thank you. Alderman from the 1st.
First of the board, Alderman from the 12th would yield.
Alderman from the 12th will yield to Alderman from the 1st.
Sure.
Please proceed, Alderman.
Alderman, so these grants that are coming up for this opioid crisis response, is this something that the health department applies for and then brings it to you to sponsor? Is that what happens?
Yes, ma'am. They apply for it through different agencies and then it has to be brought, you know, and passed as a board bill and through committee to be signed by E and A, I believe, over in the mayor's office to make it doable.
Okay, and this are, part of the things is we have, and I know one of the people is out there, we got a crisis resource response team that they go out there and they have a certain drug that they will use if somebody is ODing that brings them back to, and keeps them from ODing.
Narcan, yes.
Right. I didn't know how to, the correct drug, but I knew it was. Now, what happens? Because again, I'm going to bring this up again. So we seem to have this very progressive thought about opioids, which is a lot of different drugs. But what happens if they're out there and somebody's having a crack, something that's on crack or cocaine? Do they, are they not allowed to address that person? What happens with that?
Yes, I, I, I think it covers all aspects, Alderman. It's not just overdosing on one thing, on heroin. It's for all kinds of addictions. As you well know, you can OD on almost anything.
Right.
But it's not, it's not specified for one, it's for all. And this, it's a one-year grant and if it works out, the possibility is always good, as you know, to get another year. But it's putting a service staff together and a response team and how, how we're going to address it.
And so if somebody was, because alcohol is also a drug.
Yes.
So if somebody was, you know, and if you're trying to withdraw from alcohol, you can have a lot of side effects too. So they could, and when I say the response team, whatever they had available to them, they could also attend to them also?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not just.
I mean, it's just not for one. We want them to address every, you know, as we say, opioid problem out there, which is, you know, everything just about.
All right, thank you.
Except marijuana. So we don't have to address that too much, but.
Well.
No, and that was, but yes, it's, it's for all the other drugs. Thank you.
So I didn't, I never knew that people have these responses to marijuana other than getting the munchies, okay? Or, or laying back and being, ah, so I don't know that they, I've never heard of that.
They just kind of relax and spend a lot of money on ding dongs.
Exactly. But I, I believe we could bring them chocolate donuts or something like that, okay? Thank you, I have no further questions.
Thank you, Alderman.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 27th?
Yes, Mr. President. Alderman, would you take questions?
Alderman from the 12th, will you yield a question to the Alderman from the 27th?
Sure.
All right, Alderman from the 27th, please proceed.
The question that I have, because I'm glad that this bill is coming forward, but the question and concern that I have is, and I don't know about other residents and other wards, but somebody has said, a primary has said some years ago that we have a opium crisis and we need to do something about it. But I don't think people in this room understand in North St. Louis, we've had an opium crisis since the early 80s. And so this isn't anything that's new to us, but now we're trying to do something about it. And we have lost a lot of lives from this. And so I'm glad that he's doing this, but I'm just concerned on how are we going to help these people? Because I'm hearing a Band-Aid on it, but I think as a board, we need to look at a fix because it's not a Band-Aid situation. And so it goes back to social services. And so until we start looking at putting dollars into social service programs, it's not going to change. So I applaud him for, and his committee for doing this, but let's be realistic. We have a crisis in North St. Louis and I'm just real clear, the people in North St. Louis don't have jets and they don't have the dollars to bring that drugs into our community. And so we need to look at how to fix the problem. So that's my question, my suggestion and a question. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman from the 4th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. The pinnacle of a high is to reap the point where you're almost overdose. And I think we're sending a bad message. I think we need to have more treatment and keep saving these people. I don't mind, I don't want anybody to die. I have relatives that's on heroin, been on heroin a long time. They locked Ray Charles up for shooting heroin. But I think we need more treatment because what we're saying to these, to the addicts is that you can get as high as you want to overdose and we're going to treat you. I think that is so unfair to those people because they never change. They go, they get, they overdose, we give them the Narcan or Narcon or whatever you want to call it. They come back and they go right back out into the street and overdose again. We need more treatment of this problem and it's been going on for a very long time. My ward is infested with heroin addicts and they need treatment instead of just giving them a shot and trying to fix it. You're not fixing the problem like this. Alderman on the 27th said, you're putting a Band-Aid on a major cut and it's, artery is bleeding and you got that Band-Aid on it, it won't stop the blood from flowing. And this opioid crisis that now is a crisis because it was, it was north all the time. When it got south, that's when it became a crisis. So I'm saying that I think we're sending a bad message to the, to the, to the drug users. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Any further discussion? Alderman from the 23rd.
I, you know, I agree and I, and I agree, we need treatment. And my understanding is that the folks in the Justice Center can get treatment, but in the last, and I'm going to say so many weeks, they've had three overdoses in the Justice Center, all brought back with Narcan. But I did confirm that with Dale Glass when I was being told by someone who had, someone who had someone there that said, gee, you know, two people in their area overdosed. So I called Dale and he said, it's actually three that overdosed recently. And they offer treatment. The problem is the addicts resisted. I had friends that have died, you know, that from this, you know, it, it's really hard. I mean, it's an addiction, unfortunately, just like gambling and anything else. But treatments out there, they just have to be willing to accept and want to get it.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the 12th, you recognize to close.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I renew my motion.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 12th that we perfect Board Bill 169. All in favor, signify percent aye. Oppose, motion carries.
Board Bill 157 sponsored by Alderman Ingracia. An ordinance approving a blighting study and redevelopment plan for Shoto, Jefferson, LaSalle, Missouri, Hickory, Mackey Place redevelopment and containing that severability clause.
Alderman from the 6th, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill 157.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we perfect Board Bill 157.
Moved by Alderman from the 6th, entertain a second on that motion. Second by Alderman from the 24th, Alderman, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Board Bill 157 is a transformative and exciting project along the Shoto corridor just east of Jefferson, along Shoto, at the very edge of Lafayette Square, which has been historically industrial over the past 50 years. It's about a 13-acre site. Most of the area, people remember from the Praxair explosion in 2005. It's a very challenging site for redevelopment. There's been a handful of failed projects, most recently two, that were pretty far along in the process just because of the challenges. Many folks are familiar that the huge Mill Creek sewer goes diagonally through the site. It cannot be built upon and there needs to be an easement so that MSD can access that site 24/7. And so, so that in and of itself is a problem. There are no streets, sidewalks, curb cutouts, lighting, public utility connections or sewer lines running through there. And so it's a multimillion dollar project just to get the infrastructure in place to redevelop the project itself. I've worked closely with the developer, our financial analyst here at the board and the community to make sure we get to a place where we think that we're balancing the, the financial interests of the city with making sure that we can redevelop this site. It will include 500 housing units, townhomes, apartments, 120 condos, about 85,000 square feet in commercial and retail development. The developer, the team is from the neighborhood. It's a local business owner, two local business owners and somebody who's lived in the neighborhood for over 30 years. They've already established and have a track record of working with, in the community to make sure that we are building according to the city's sustainability plan to lead standards. There will be workforce housing as a part of the project and the, the developer is committed to using union workers and prevailing wage. It will generate about 300 jobs to the tune of about $8 million in payroll taxes and $43 million a year in taxable sales. They've already spoken to the Shoto Greenway Project and it would be compatible with that and also compatible with MetroLink, which goes, ties in nicely with the workforce housing. It would be really easy for people to get to and from work and live in the city. The ask on the abatement is a little bit complicated and so just quickly, it, it looks on the surface like 95% abatement for 15 years, but there is a recapture on many of the projects for the entire abatement on market rate housing to go back into a CID. It will be re-imposed as a CID assessment to pay for the public infrastructure improvements so that the city is not on the hook for that and the developers are able to recoup their money for the over $6 million it's going to cost for that. Each individual parcel will have to undergo a development plan back at LTRA, so there's a additional level of oversight. Any projects that are not completed over eight years, there will be a clawback so the tax abatement won't be as long and the percentage won't be as high. I guess I'll close it there and if colleagues have questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Alderman from the 24th.
Hey, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to rise in support of this and just highlight how incredibly complicated some of these redevelopment things can be in St. Louis. You know, it's, we all remember this site caused a, a, an extreme public safety issue in, was it 2005 or 2006? Was it 2005 or 2000?
2005.
2005, right. You know, it's, it's encouraging that there's demand for construction of new housing, but you look at the, you look at all the factors involved in something like this. and getting it done, and I think it, it gives you an appreciation for why sometimes we need some tax incentives to do it, and just an appreciation for the, um, the, the challenge of, of working through these things between a developer and various property owners, and SLDC, and aldermen, and existing community nearby. So in, in my mind, this is an impressive project. I hope it goes well. And, but I, I just, I just think it's important to, to note that these things are, um, you know, they're not just falling out of the sky into our laps, it, it took years and years and years of different people looking at this until something panned out. And the continued, continued construction of new housing units, I think, in the long run, certainly will help maintain St. Louis as an affordable place to live, because when you've got supply, it keeps, um, keeps prices from increasing too quickly. So, uh, that's all I wanted to say. Good luck, Alderman from the 6th. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, you know, I have very mixed feelings about this particular bill, partly because I think that it should have been assigned to my committee, but aside from that, uh, you know, this is a, a bill that has had much discussion over the past year now, I believe. The Alderman from the 6th Ward actually introduced me to a number of the community stakeholders and investors in this project. It is a very exciting project, and this part of, you know, this neighborhood is very much underutilized at this point in time, and has been for, you know, quite some time now. I think it is one of those exceptional circumstances where, you know, the, the tax incentives are being used for public infrastructure, which is, you know, always to our benefit to be able to, um, to provide those services to our residents. But I do also wanna commend the Alderman from the 6th Ward, because when I first sat down with the developers, they were asking for a considerable amount more than what is now being offered via this bill. So, um, you know, thank you for your work in clawing back some of the incentives and expectations that were out there. Um, you know, I think we, we have a lot more work to do, but certainly putting, you know, underutilized property back onto the tax rolls and providing a neighborhood with a little bit more stability would be a wonderful thing. So, I, I guess in that sense, I wanna commend you and express my appreciation for all of your hard work on this as well. But, you know, look forward to seeing what actually happens with the project too, going forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the 6th, you recognize the close.
Thank you, Mr. President, I renew my motion.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 6th, seconded by the Alderman from the 24th, that we perfect Board Bill 157. All in favor, signify by a sign of a "aye."
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Board Bill 104, sponsored by Alderman Davis, an ordinance enlarging the boundaries of the Port Authority of the City Port District, subject to the approval of the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission, and authorizing certain actions in connection therewith.
Alderman from the 19th, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill 104.
Mr. President, members of the board, I waited until the last moment, and I don't have the technical documents before this board in order to move forward. I will be putting this back on the informal calendar, and I will also add to this that during all the confusion with this board bill, there was an opportunity for members to get more clarity from SLDC, and there were some suggestions that were made, which should have been in the bill originally, and it wasn't. And so when I get the appropriate documents, hopefully by next Friday, we will move forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Madam Clerk, please place Board Bill 104 back on the perfection and formal calendar.
So noted. That is the extent of Board Bill's for perfection.
Third reading consent.
We have none.
Third reading, report of engrossment.
Board Bill 1, I'm sorry, Board Bill 25 as amended, sponsored by Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Moore, and Alderman Bosley, an ordinance submitting to the qualified voters of the city, a proposed amendment to the charter to maintain a board of aldermen as body of 28 aldermen representing 28 wards, and preventing its reduction beginning December 31st, 2021, to a body of 14 aldermen representing 14 wards, and containing that emergency clause.
Alderman from the 21st, you recognize on third reading and final passage of Board Bill Number 25.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I would like to request that Board Bill 25 as amended is withdrawn from the records of the Board of Aldermen.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Board Bill 25 as amended has been withdrawn by the primary sponsor.
So noted. Just a second.
Is that the extent?
Yes, I'm trying to find it. I'm sorry. That is the extent of third reading, report of engrossment.
Report of enrollment.
We have none.
Courtesy resolutions. Alderman from the 19th, you recognize on a motion for the courtesy resolution.
Mr. President, members of the board, I ask for approval of our courtesy resolution agenda.
Moved by the Alderman from the 19th, seconded by the Alderman from the 22nd. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by a sign of a "aye."
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Thank you.
That is the extent of Curtis Resolution Consent.
First, first, hold on a second. First reading resolutions.
Resolution 198, sponsored by Alderman Navaro, the renewal of the Central West End North Special Business District.
Alderman from the 28th, you recognize on first reading resolution, 198.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that we adopt Resolution 198 by unanimous consent.
Second.
No need, for a second. Hearing no objection, please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Resolution Number 198 is a companion to a previously introduced board bill that would extend the time for the Special Business District in the Central West End North.
All right, any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the 28th, you recognize.
Thank you, I renew my motion.
Now you need to, now you need to make the motion.
I'm sorry, I, I move that we adopt Resolution 198 by unanimous consent.
Been moved by, been moved by the Alderman from the 28th, seconded by the Alderman from the 25th. Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 198 through unanimous consent. All in favor, signify by a sign of a "aye."
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Resolution 199, sponsored by Alderman Navaro, the renewal of the Cathedral Square Special Business District.
Alderman from the 28th, you recognize on the first reading of Resolution 199.
Thank you, Mr. President, so, oh, I move that we adopt Resolution 199 by unanimous consent.
Just request unanimous.
A request. I apologize. A request that we adopt it.
Hearing no objection, please proceed, Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolution 199 is a companion resolution to previously introduced ordinance that would extend for 10 years, the Cathedral Square Special Business District, which is also located in the Central West End.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the 28th, you recognize.
Thank you, I request adoption of, uh, resolution, I move for, adoption of Resolution 199.
Perfect. It's been moved by the Alderman from the 28th, seconded by the Alderman from the 25th. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by a sign of a "aye."
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
That is the extent of first reading of resolution.
Second reading.
We have none.
Mislands, unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Wednesday, December 12th, Ways and Means, 10:00 AM in the Leisure Room, and Friday, December 14th, full board meeting, 10:00 AM in the chambers. That is the extent of the announcements.
Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the 7th.
President, members of the board, this Sunday is the Lafayette Square Annual Holiday Parlour Tour, starts at 10:00 AM, goes till 5:00 PM. You can come tour historic homes around Lafayette Park in the Lafayette Square neighborhood. A number of them will be, uh, well decorated and, and have their doors open. Hope you can make it, tickets are $20. You can buy them online at LafayetteSquare.org, or you can buy them at the corner of, what is that, Lafayette and Mississippi. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 4th.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. I'd like to recognize my committee woman, Dwayne Evans. This Evans was just standing. Tomorrow's Saturday, 8:00 AM, at Kennelley Temple, the 11th Annual Breakfast with Santa. We feed the kids breakfast, they take pictures with Santa, we give them a bag of fruit and nuts, put a coat on their back, and give them a bag of toys. I get no press from this. This is my 11th year doing this for the children, but if it was someone laying dead on the street, it's good news for the, for the TV channels. We don't get any good press in the 4th Ward about this, but this is my 11th. I wanna thank the carpenters, chip, operating engineers, Claude Brown, Crown Food, Jeff Abusi, the firehouse, AKA's, the Marines for the Toys, Kennelley Temple, and all those that I miss. But we need press, we wanna see the kids, come and see the kids, and you're welcome to come eat breakfast with us. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. We also have a, we also have a special birthday of none other than Lisa McNichols. Let's give her a big round of applause and a happy birthday for Lisa. And I'm sure before we adjourn today, someone will stand and help lead us in happy birthday song, Lisa. I don't, I do not have a singing voice. Alderman from the 25th.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
Cameras should be on Lisa.
Happy birthday, dear Lisa. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you, Alderman. All right, Alderman from the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Happy birthday, Lisa. Lisa's one of the first person I ever met down here. Uh, I just wanna say today, um, you know, with the holiday season's upon us, I, I think we just learn every day what we're grateful for, our family and our friends. So I just wanna announce today, just a friend of mine, Officer Steve Kaiser, who passed away, uh, he was diagnosed with brain cancer. He fought through that, and he died of a heart attack of all things. A young man with two kids, growing up in, uh, St. Louis. Uh, you know, you don't get to say the good things all the time, but Officer Kaiser was a good man, I have never, ever heard a bad word about him. So I just want us all, you know, just reminisce for a minute and be thankful every day.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 24th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to wish everybody a happy sixth night of Hanukkah.
Yes.
These bright poinsettia plants are not unlike the candles on a menorah, so happy holidays, everybody.
Absolutely. Alderman from the 14th.
I would like to invite everyone down to Das Bevo for the Wonder Market, that will take place this Saturday and next at 12 o'clock. If you haven't ever been to Europe for Christmas, this will give you that flavor without the trip. So come on down to the Bevo and enjoy a little bit of the holiday spirit and the European markets, and I think you'll have a good time and maybe find some good little presents there.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the 19th.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I stand just to say thank you, and say thank you because there's so much negativity that flows around on a regular basis, puts people in a position to have a thought process that maybe they shouldn't help. But we do know that that is a part of how our society works. Those who are in a position to help, they do, they look for others to give them direction on where the help is most needed. So for all of you who have been accused of taking bribes, who have been accused of doing wrong, who've been accused of simply speaking to an alderman, I wanna say to you, you better continue to talk, you better continue to do what you do best, which is helping people. You have the means to do it, it needs to be done, we need even more of it done, because unfortunately, in this society, there are a lot of people who simply cannot help themselves, 'cause they're so busy just trying to survive every day. And so I appreciate all the assistance that you do in various ways in our communities. It is needed, it is appreciated, and nobody here should ever feel bad about doing your job. Do it more, do it better. I say thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman, and really appreciate that. And we appreciate the program that Alderman from the 4th has worked on for so many years, as he stated, 11 years now. And he collects coats and gives it to these needy kids all over the city, and it is just, I mean, it is a phenomenal program. And I know some people have tried to malign you for it in the past, and, and I appreciate you standing up, Alderman, and setting the record straight. And as the Alderman stated, there should be press about that, because they show up, they show up at all other things, they need to show up for that also. So thank you for those 11 years. Alderman from the 28th, you've been good and patient.
Thank you. I, I missed someone at the beginning, and so I would like to introduce my honored guest today, which is Gail Farwell. She's the committee woman from the 28th, and I wanna recognize her leadership in the community, especially her good work getting people registered to vote this last election. So thank you, Committee Woman Gail Farwell.
Alderman from the 10th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Next Saturday, not tomorrow, but on the 15th, it's Christmas on the Hill. Please come down to the corner of Wilson and Marconi, St. Ambrose Church, there'll be carrot-dried, roasting chestnuts, there'll be a reindeer to get your picture taken with. Come down and, I don't know if it'll be riled off, but you can have your picture taken with a live reindeer on the hill. So next Saturday, December 15th, from noon till 5:30. Thank you.
Alderman from the 22nd, I'd like to also introduce our union representatives, also while you're up. All right, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to announce that on Monday, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, at the Omega Center, the 22nd Ward will be celebrating its 15th-year holiday party, so I wanna encourage all the residents of the 22nd Ward to come out, fellowship, have a good time, as you know we do every year. Thank you.
Alderman from the 4th.
Mr. President and members of the board, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that, on Thanksgiving, we gave over 700 turkeys away, and there's a few, a few turkeys left, so if you're gonna need a turkey for Christmas, see me and we can get you a turkey for Christmas. Thank you.
All right. Alderman from the 3rd.
Looks like I'll be wrapping it up, sort of.
Run up.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, um, this Saturday, we have our annual 3rd Ward Christmas Party that has been going on for as long as I can remember. Uh, so we'll be giving away about 100 bikes to different kids all around the neighborhood, and at least 300 toys, so you all wanna come out, we have, uh, Christmas dinner, we do karaoke, we kick it, we enjoy ourselves. It'll be from like 3 to, uh, 7? 3 to 6, at Herbert Hoover Boys and Girls Club off North Branch. So if y'all get a chance, you can come on out. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 14th.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Mr. John Stifler, uh, from the Building and Construction Trades Council of St. Louis, AFL-CIO, right over here. And also Jeffrey Abusi.
All right, you're welcome, welcome, guys. Any, any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the board, it's my understanding that all members were present.
Well, that's a good day. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the board adjourns until Friday, December 14th, 10:00 AM.
Moved by the Alderman from the 18th, seconded by the Alderman from the 10th and the 24th and the twenty-fifth. All in favor, signify by a percent. Aye. Oppose. Stand adjourned.